I'm just going to.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the Board of Education Regular Meeting. It is September 24th, 2025. Are we in compliance with open meeting laws?
Yes, we are.
Can you call the roll, please?
DeWitt.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Herzog.
Here.
Hess.
Here.
Smeltnik.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Wyman.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And now if you would all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dr. Davis, the land acknowledgement.
Yes, as we gather today, I would like to acknowledge that in Oshkosh, we are on the ancestral homelands of the Ho-Chunk Nation and the Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin, who lived along the western shores of Lake Winnebago, Wisconsin's largest freshwater lake entirely within its borders. We acknowledge these indigenous sovereign communities who have stewarded this land throughout the generations and pay respect to their elders, past and present. We welcome the duty and opportunity to share stewardship of these lands.
Thank you. And next we move into the approval of agenda. Because we have so many guests here tonight, I would like to suggest to the board that we move the public forum to the forefront of our agenda. Are there any objections? Okay. Then we will be doing that. And I would like to start off by reading some rules of decorum and civility. And as you can imagine, civility is of utmost importance this evening. In 2010, 15 years ago, there was a group that got together and put together some rules of civility for our community. You may see these posters hanging in many places throughout the city. This is what it says. Pay attention, be aware, and attend the world and the people around you. Listen, focus on others in order to better understand their points of view. Be inclusive. Welcome all groups of citizens working for the greater good of the community. Don't gossip, and don't accept when others choose to do so. Show respect. Honor other people and their opinions, especially in the midst of a disagreement. Be agreeable. Look for opportunities to agree. Don't contradict just to do so. Apologize. Be sincere and repair damaged relationships. Give constructive criticism. When disagreeing, stick to the issues and don't make a personal attack. And finally, take responsibility. Don't shift responsibility and blame onto others. Share disagreements publicly. We have a few other rules for this evening. Flapping, cheering, or booing will not be allowed in this space to ensure that all citizens who speak can do so without judgment. Jazz hands are acceptable if you would like to show support of an idea. If someone is in violation of the rules, you will receive one warning before being removed. Should that person continue to be in violation, a five-minute break will be called. At that time, all cameras will be turned off, and the person will be escorted out of the building. Tonight, we do not have any agenda-related public forum speakers, so we will start with the non-agenda-related public forum. I want to remind you that public comments will be limited to those that reside in the Oshkosh area school district or have children attending the district. For safety purposes, people providing their public comments will need to state their name and the city they reside, not a specific address. When you come up to the microphone, please clearly state your name, the city you reside, the topic you would like to discuss. If you are acting as a spokesperson for a particular group of individuals, please indicate that group. Please state clearly and concisely your matters of concern. Please limit your comments to the three minutes. And please remember that the use of specific names or district personnel, titles, or identified descriptions may lead to legal liability. In such instances, please pursue the district's formal complaint process by contacting the superintendent's office to direct you to the appropriate administrator. And as I mentioned before, if you mention a name, you will receive one warning before being removed. Also, because this public forum is not noticed with topics, board members cannot respond back to you. We cannot debate, and we cannot respond. And that is not just for this meeting. That is the same rule we have for every board meeting, just so you're aware if you haven't been to one of our meetings. Okay, we have 28 speakers tonight. Sorry. Let's get going. The first one is Justin Opperman. Yeah, and on deck would be Adam Arons.
Hello. My name is Justin Opperman. I live here in Oshkosh. I am a current parent and a former student in the area, Oshkosh area school district. I'm really concerned about a Facebook post made by somebody who works in the district. The fact that this individual that worked in the district publicly considers Charlie Kirk's views, which in a lot of ways are my own, to be quote morally evil, and another quote, "The world is a better place without his voice and ideas." It is absolutely disgusting to me. Does he feel the same way about me and the other parents that have their kids inside of this school? Let me continue to read from his post to quote, "It reminds me of that old line always misattributed to Mark Twain. I've never wished a man dead, but I've read some obituaries with great glee." Great glee? Even though he said this outside of working hours, it should have not been inside of our school. He should have known that this was completely inappropriate to say this after somebody was shot for voicing their own opinions. And it makes me very, very concerned about the kind of people we have working around and inside of our schools, especially our kids who are at the age where they are just starting to form their own political opinions and could be easily indoctrinated with this ideology. And how many students have seen this post from the individual who works at the school district? I know if I were one of them, I'd feel unsafe inside and around the classroom with someone who thinks that way about me. It got me wondering, what was he saying around the students? And I heard from at least two other students, and saw several others on the Facebook comments,
I didn't make noise about it. My point here is, this teacher deserves the same respect and consideration that those other individuals did. I thank you for your time. And if I may, Carmen, she's my daughter.
I am very proud of you, Carmen. Way to go.
Next is Paul Stelflug, and on deck is Jeffrey Watts.
Hi, I'm Paul Stelflug. I live in Amroth, but I have open-rolled all proudly. I've opened and rolled all four of my daughters to this school district. Two of my daughters have already had this teacher, the Facebook post teacher. One of them is currently in this teacher's class. I find it really disturbing that so many people are thinking he's trying to indoctrinate people by voicing his opinion in a private, sorry, in a public forum, but in his private time, in his private space. I never felt that there was any indoctrination going on. I know several teachers, and every teacher I know constantly worries about not stepping over that boundary line. That's why they are professional teachers. And I find it disturbing that so many people just rush to judgment and think that this sort of political bent is being brought into the classroom. Now, once in a while, maybe it does get brought into the classroom, but that's called playing devil's advocate. If you're going to educate a child, you have to challenge their thoughts. You have to challenge the status quo. And let's not forget, the Greeks put Socrates to death because he taught the youth to challenge the system, to challenge the status quo. And I'm incredibly concerned that if a certain portion of the population is able to use the power of government to restrict speech, that's a dangerous slippery slope. It's one thing if Target wants to fire somebody because of what they said, or Ford. If what they have said on a social media post, a badge they wear, whatever it may be, that's a private company. Government employees, especially teachers, we have tenure, had tenure, to protect them so they can provoke thought. And the way you provoke thought is challenging kids. If the school district takes punitive measures against this teacher, it would have chilling effects on the education of students. My last two students in this district are seniors, and one of them has them, loves them to death. He's a hard teacher. He grades hard. He's tough. He has prepared my elder two, to a great extent, to be successful at college. I'm concerned that there's maybe parents or students here, or in the community, that are mad at him because they didn't get the grade they liked. I hope that the school district, the school board, is very reserved in any sort of measure they take in this regard. Freedom of speech needs to be protected within reason. You can't go on social media posts and start professing adherence to Al Qaeda and terrorism, for goodness sakes. But at what point does it become so unreasonable that you can control it versus, no, that's not so unreasonable, that's not so controversial? I urge caution. Don't venture into this with a light heart. Thanks.
Thank you. Jeffrey Watts, and on deck, Amber Gilbertson.
Y'all look really nice today. Ready? So we've been told tonight about civility, rules, and not making personal attacks, and I agree with those principles, but I also find it deeply ironic, given what's happening in our current schools. My son, along with his Asian friend and his African-American friend, were faced with racial slurs, not even two days ago. "I live in Oshkosh, Wisconsin, shut your mouth." My son showed restraint, and my name-
Excuse me?
He showed civility. He didn't lash out. He devastated growth and maturity. Yet, he was, you know, the current student who said these things was only punished with ISS, while he slung a slur, and it was barely addressed. That is not civility being honored. That is selective enforcement of rules. Now, to add to that, something even more disturbing, a teacher in our district, someone entrusted with shaping young minds, stood in front of students, and not only justified the killing of Charlie Kirk, but placed it on social media, and called him morally evil, and said the world was better without him. Think about that for a moment. That wasn't sarcasm of Kirk's ideas or politics. That was a teacher declaring the world a better-off place because a man is dead. If that's not a personal attack, then I don't know what is. And if that is tolerated in the classroom, then we are teaching kids hatred and violence, and that's absolutely unacceptable. It is acceptable to disagree, but that is not civility. That is not education. That is poison. Kirk himself once said that if either side stops having discourse, that we are one step away from civil war. And you know what? He was right. And it raises a serious question. Why should we even have a history class? Why should we teach the Constitution, our nation's greatest guarantee of free speech? If this district allows someone to equate free speech with death, why do we still teach authors like Mark Twain, who wrote Huckleberry Finn and had openly held racist views? Yet to tolerate a teacher who says it's better off with the world, better's world when a political opponent is gone? That makes a mockery of every lesson that we claim to be teaching. And here's another layer of irony. For years, we've heard that the left is wielding cancel culture as a weapon, destroying people's lives for a word, a joke, or a mistake. But now, now, when cancel culture comes full circle, it's truly evil. We're told that suddenly cancel culture is a bad practice. Now it's doubled down, and should not fool around, and we shouldn't hurt anybody. But let's be real. If any job that you break the code of conduct, your employer can fire you. And that's how the real world works. And in this case, we, the people, are the employer. This teacher works for us. He works for taxpayers. And if he has violated the code of conduct, and clearly he has, then we need to no longer continue his employment. And he should, and if you're not up for it, let the public vote. And I'll say this, we should be ashamed, ashamed that a racial slur was brushed aside, ashamed that a teacher stood in a classroom and justified a man's killing, ashamed that instead of modeling respect and truth and accountability, our schools are spreading hate and executing division. We are supposed to be a Christian nation founded on values of truth, accountability, and respect, and love for our neighbor. Yet our public schools are increasingly refusing to reflect the values, and our kids are left believing that rules do not apply to them, never to the adults-
Mr. Watts.
So I'm asking, and I'm demanding, if we are to preach civility-
Time is up.
Time is up.
Let's just wait a second till we- Just take a pause for a second, regroup. And we'll also say that Jean, is it Braemer, is on deck? Okay, thank you, Jean. Okay, Amber, welcome.
Hello, I am Amber Lynn Gilbertson. I'm a resident of Oshkosh, Wisconsin. I am an OASD parent and a former student of the before-mentioned teacher. He was my creative writing teacher. He never brought politics into the classroom. He always encouraged us to find our own voice. And I did. I actually did. In his apostrophe club, where he encouraged us to not only bring our poetry, our short stories, but also bring our art, bring anything we wanted to share with each other, so we could help each other, reach out to each other, and learn from each other. He never shared anything during that club that was his own opinion. It was all us. It was my safe space. It was safe space for my friends, too. I wasn't a straight A student, but he saw promise in me. He encouraged me. When the counselor that I had told my mom, "You won't go to college. You won't amount to anything. You should come up with a backup plan, just in case." I didn't hear that from him. We need more students like him. My children need more students like him. I'd like to end with a quote from Benjamin Franklin. "Without freedom of thought, there can be no such thing as wisdom; and with no such thing as public liberty," there is no such thing as public liberty, "without freedom of speech." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jean Braemer, and on deck is Dan Irish.
Hello, I'm Jean Braemer. I used to attend Oshkosh West High School, and I'm a current resident of Oshkosh. I appreciate everybody allowing me the time to speak today. One of the most common things I see getting brought up regarding this teacher is he is incredibly supportive, and he provides a safe space for students, and doesn't bring his ideals into class. To take away someone's financial livelihood because of political pressure is incredibly backwards, especially when the words written were, I believe, well within, and many others believe were well within, his First Amendment rights. Comments made on current events are a public concern, something that has been proven in the Supreme Court, that it is a part of our First Amendment rights. And I read the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Policies and Expectations myself, and I don't believe that this teacher has violated any of those rules. I urge you to just think of how the students will feel, taking away a safe space and a safe teacher. That could show children that speaking their mind is something that they should fear, and that they could fear losing their jobs because of it. And I don't think that's something we should be showing our students. I fear the implications that could come from this, if this could make students begin to internalize their opinions because they believe that they're going to lose their job. I feel students already are very scared about adulthood and about life, so to do something like this, I feel like is just going to further invoke fear. Before making a decision, I just wanted to implore you guys, if you aren't familiar already with the Supreme Court ruling of Pickett versus the Board of Education, to please look into that. It has a lot of similarities to what's going on now, and I feel like it could provide some great insight. Once again, thank you guys for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Dan Irish, and on deck is Mary Manchester.
Good evening, and thanks for having me. My name is Dan Irish. I live here in Oshkosh. Disagreement is a necessary part of any organization. That's the only way that we progress as a group or as an organization. There's a lot of talk here tonight about free speech. There was a gentleman recently that was a husband, a father of two, a Christian, a fellow citizen of the United States, and, most important, a fellow human being. He was murdered at a live event because of free speech, because of his speech. Now, the teacher that wrote the comment in Facebook that so many of us are here for, I don't believe that any, well, I shouldn't say any, some might be, I wouldn't be here if he would have stopped at representing Charlie Kirk's ideas and opinions in any way that he want. There is a line, though. When in any shape or form you condone killing someone that you disagree with, that becomes an issue of moral turpitude. And I do think there is a line, and I do think that, as the school board, you're going to be the first ones that are, in essence, maybe forced to make a decision on this issue. I would just hope that you consider the severity of the comments. To write this off as saying that it was purely personal, that he can say anything that he wants to, he can. That is his First Amendment right. However, for you as the board, and for us as the citizens of Oshkosh, to think that his personal character, that his personal viewpoints aren't ever, whether it's directly or indirectly, aren't ever injected into his teaching and influencing our young kids, that's wishful thinking at best, and a horribly fashioned hallucination at worst. I would hope that you would take into consideration that there is a line for First Amendment rights. And when it becomes an issue that those of us that we disagree with should be killed, that's a line that shouldn't be crossed. I'm going to propose a hypothetical, and remember, law enforcement, this is a hypothetical. But what if we applied this teacher's standard of rational thought for those we disagree with to him? Are we better off? I hope that you'll think about that.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Mary Manchester, and on deck, Jean Erdman.
Hi, my name's Mary Manchester. I live in Oshkosh, and I'm a parent of a child in Oshkosh, the school district. I'm here tonight to speak in support of an Oshkosh West teacher who made a particular social media post. This Facebook post, though controversial to some, was written on the teacher's personal time outside of his role as a teacher. Our district policies and the First Amendment itself are clear that employees retain the right to speak on matters of public concern, so long as it does not disrupt school operations. There has been no evidence of such disruption. In fact, former students tonight have said that this teacher does not bring politics into the classroom. They describe him as respectful, supportive, and someone who makes every student feel safe. That's exactly what I expect from my child's educators. Many parents and former students have also testified that this teacher had a lasting positive impact on their lives. He has built trust, created a safe environment, and lived up to the values we expect in this district. To discipline or dismiss him now would not only disregard that record, it would also set a dangerous precedent, one where teachers could fear for their jobs every time they express a personal opinion outside of school. And if the standard truly is that personal speech outside of work warrants removal, then consistency matters. That would mean that, as a purely hypothetical example, if school board members employed catfishing techniques to influence referendums or to bully community members, they should also be removed from their positions. I don't believe that's the direction our community wants to take, nor should it be. We all want a district that protects fairness, respects lawful speech, and maintains trust between educators, students, and families. I urge the board to uphold those values and support this teacher. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jean Erdman, and on deck is Reese Meter.
Hi, my name is Jean Erdman, and I live in Oshkosh, Wisconsin. I'm alumni of the district. My children are alumni of the district, and next year I'll have a grandchild in the district. I appreciate and thank the district for the education I received, and for what you are now doing for new generations. I'm also a retired teacher educator, so I spent about 35 years teaching teachers. It's a slippery slope if you start to give up, if you think rights are something that can be taken away. Rights, by the very meaning of the word, are something that cannot be taken away. While we may be in a historical moment where politicians think they can be taken away, that battle is not yet over. Okay? This is what will happen if you go down the slippery slope of what kind of free speech is allowed and what kind of free speech isn't allowed. You will lose the trust of staff, trust that you vitally need to reach, to educate the students, okay? You will lose the trust of steadfast district volunteers. You will lose ground on community engagement. You will lose respect. Leave this strong and trusted and skillful teacher alone. Do not be bullied by people who are angry or are bringing their emotions to the microphone. That is your job. You have responsibilities as a school board. I think this is probably the most important issue I've ever spoken to this board about. I feel very deeply that how you vote on this will make a huge difference in the education that children receive in the future. Please do not mess this up. Thank you.
Thank you. Reese Meter, and on deck is Sarah Scherzer. Reese, pronounce your last name for me. I don't think I sounded it out correctly.
My name is Reese Meyer.
Meyer. Got it. Thank you.
I live in Oshkosh, and I'm a student of Oshkosh West. I'd like to speak about our First Amendment right. I strongly believe that teachers should have the right to freedom of speech outside the classroom. They aren't doing any harm by expressing their opinions and views of what's going on in today's society. Freedom of speech is the right to express ideas, opinions, and information without the government censorship, interference, or punishment. Any Americans, including teachers, should have these rights when their speech is made outside of the classroom, not connecting their speech to beliefs, or their students, or school, whoa, or school of employment. This teacher in question has proven to me to be a very good, fair, and trusting English teacher. He helps me understand things I've been taught that I have not understood in the past and have struggled to understand. His opinion does not have any knowing impact on what he teaches, and I believe that he should not be, it shouldn't have an impact on his job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next up, we have Sarah Scherzer, and on deck is Chris Corbin.
Hello, my name is Sarah Scherzer, and I am also an alumni from Oshkosh West. I do have school-aged children, and I'm a parent. There are five codes of ethics for teachers, and this applies for all teachers. Principle number one, responsibility to the profession. Principle number two, responsibility for professional competence. Principle number three, responsibility to students. Principle number four, responsibility to school community. And principle number five, responsibility and ethical use of technology. As a government employee, you are to uphold order, restrain evil, and commend those who do right. Wisconsin Administration Code, Chapter PI34, Subchapter, for those that want to look it up, Roman numeral 11 states inappropriate use of technology, including social media. As an Oshkosh West teacher, you have violated these ethic codes, and sanctionable conduct has occurred. You have elicited violence, and your certification should be revoked. And you should no longer be allowed to teach in a public school. You forfeited your right to educate our children. You forfeited your right to be around children. You need to be held accountable. It doesn't matter if you had a lapse in judgment. What you did was wrong, and the world will be a better place as long as Christian values and ideas are forefront and center. And I just want to say thank you for listening tonight. Have a good evening.
Thank you. We have now Chris Corbin, and on deck Mallory Schneider-Berschbach.
Hello. I'm Father Chris Corbin of Oshkosh, and I want to thank you all for this opportunity to speak. I rise to speak against the termination of any Oshkosh Area School District teacher for comments made on a personal social media account that, while certainly not agreed with by all, fall, and in this particular case, fell, well within the bounds of moral, religious, and political conversation in an open and democratic society. I actually do agree with the principle that Charlie Kirk himself claimed. We should have open discourse and debate. If you disagree with someone's moral reasoning in a public forum, argue your case and win on the merits of the truth. It is the coward's path to use force, such as threats to livelihood, to short-circuit debate. My primary concern with this potential action, though, is not to defend any particular content, but to strongly caution against the message this action itself will send. What do we say to the young people of our community when there will be no meaningful repercussions for posting controversial and partisan content from pseudonymous social media accounts, while that a person's willingness to own their words and beliefs is met with punishment? What does this say when pseudonymous accounts are a frequent tool for online bullying and harassment, a far-too-common reality for so many of our young people? I think it is appropriate to quote scripture at this point as well, since those on the other side have also seen that as an appropriate action. My Lord, Jesus Christ, said in St. Matthew's Gospel, "Let your yes be yes, and your no, no; for whatever is more than these is from the evil one." This is a clear admonition to say and own exactly what you mean, and not to use innuendo or slippery speech. I strongly urge you to think about the message such a termination would send to the many students, especially vulnerable students, who look to the schools and the school board to protect them from bullying and harassment. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you. Mallory Schneider-Berschbach, and on deck Laura Demming.
Hello, my name's Mallory Schneider-Berschbach. I reside in the city of Oshkosh. First, I need to make clear that I am critical of individuals, groups, and parties across the political spectrum. I do not pledge allegiance to political candidates, parties, or groups. Frankly, that's the way it should be. I wish more people followed suit. I'm speaking regarding the outcry and the comments made by an OASD teacher on Charlie Kirk. Our district and school board, earlier this year, established precedent when there was no discipline for two school board members that used fake profiles on Facebook to spread misinformation regarding a variety of topics that directly affected our community at large. Let me be clear, what these two board members did is not entirely the same, it's probably worse, but their excuse for their behavior was free speech. So, if their actions as elected officials was free speech, then this teacher speaking on their personal social media profile should be treated the same. It's as simple as that. The hypocrisy of folks calling for the firing of this teacher is not shocking. They only want free speech for themselves, but not for anyone speaking negatively about the partisan leaders that they idolize and worship. I don't care which side folks are on politically. Don't be hypocritical. Going big picture and with bluntness here, all of this is just dumb. The continued manufactured crises of non-issues, especially in terms of culture wars, is dumb. Political commentators are grifting, and they're making millions off of this manufactured rage and fear, including Charlie Kirk. This is for their own benefit. I think more people are finally realizing the strategy of the wealthy class fracturing the working class for their own gains. It's pathetic. It's a waste of time and resources. Let's stop attacking students, staff, and this community, and get back to what the governing body is meant to do: provide essential public education. I'm hoping that the district and the board does the right thing and keeps a teacher on staff with no disciplinary action. Remember, you all set precedent earlier this year. Fair and equal treatment is expected now. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Laura Demming, and on deck is Maxwell Singletary.
Hello, I'm Laura Demming. I live in Oshkosh, and I went to Reed School growing up. I didn't prepare something other than to say that I believe in the freedom of speech, and I support the things that have already been said regarding that, particularly the last speaker. Thank you for giving us a chance to air our thoughts and to be together in this way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Maxwell Singletary, and on deck Patrick Kuhl.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Maxwell James Singletary, father and resident of Oshkosh, Wisconsin, and I'm here to unify just a few thoughts as a former student. As a former graduate at Oshkosh West, I've known this teacher as a creative mentor, theater director, and a friend. His passion for the English language strives students to consolidate identity through writing, creating a safe space and environment of self-expression. As a former student who relied heavily on the creative pen, he took the time to teach me about creative fiction and gave my first theatrical role in You Can't Take It With You as Jack Kirby on the stage, showing me what makes the grass grow greener with every engine inside each blade of grass. I can vouch for my friends who shared the stage, how he's left a positive impact with each and every individual. And without his encouragement to pursue a career in the arts, I would not have found the voice, openness in community, and courage as an artist I have today. the voice, openness in community, and courage as an artist I have today. The reach of his reinforcement echoed into my parenting as a creative, and seeing my daughter express interest in finding her own vocality with a pen leaves a positive impact of his teaching as I remembered it 17 years ago. I feel that a singled-out opinion on social media outside of the classroom should not have punitive outweighing measures upon a teacher's career and creative freedoms that would go against the rights and protections of the First Amendment. He was sharing an honest and justifiable opinion all educators deserve off school grounds. The real argument is, how do we move forward from an altercation as a better union without damaging our protections towards creative freedoms? To quote Mark Twain, "To lodge all power into one party and keep it there is to ensure bad government and the sure and gradual deterioration of the public morals. Reciprocity is a cornerstone of this country making up who we are." And I feel within our current political tensions, we are losing an understanding of that with each other. Whether you identify as a Kirby or a Sycamore, I hope one day we can harmonize under the same house we all live in. We've all got our health, and as far as anything else is concerned, we'll leave it to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Patrick Kuhl, and on deck is Sue Panik.
My name is Patrick Kuhl, and I live in the city of Oshkosh. I'm here tonight to express my support for the First Amendment and for all the teachers in the Oshkosh School District who may feel hesitant about speaking openly. While some may disagree with recent comments, and others may applaud them, what matters is that they were thoughtful and measured, and neither attacked anyone nor condoned violence. I'm not a lawyer or an expert in HR policy, but I do not believe that the remarks made violate the district's social media policy. We need dedicated teachers who can help our students articulate their thoughts and clarity with confidence beyond simple emojis and TikTok videos. Teachers' jobs are difficult enough, as is, and I ask that you don't make them more difficult by censoring them outside of the classroom.
Thank you. Sue Panik, and on deck Missy Daly.
Hi, I'm Sue Panik. Beth, you should know that by now. I'm sorry. I don't have children in the school district. I didn't graduate from this school district, but I do live in Oshkosh, and I'm a taxpayer. And I do not have a problem paying for other people's children to go to public education and get a public education. Couple of things: I'm also on the Civility Project. I'm one of the key leaders of that project right now, and I thank the school board and congratulate you for following those and reinforcing those at today's meeting. There were a couple of things that I heard, and if I remember my education, and as you can tell, it's been a long time since I've been in school, I don't think this country was founded on Christianity. We were founded on freedom of religion. And I think that that's an important distinction that we need to make. People keep saying, you know, we are a Christian nation. Well, we might predominantly be Christian. We were actually founded on freedom of religion. I'm about protecting free speech, and while I did not read the post, and so I'm not going to comment on that particular post, I think that it's important that we recognize that person's ability to say what he said in that public but personal forum. From my understanding, he did not do it during school hours. He did not use school time or resources to make the comment, and so to have any disciplinary action against that teacher, from my understanding, seems to be a little bit unlawful and could undermine the public trust. I also think that I'm so proud of the people, the students particularly, that came forward, whether they agreed with this person or not, but they came forward to share their opinion because this is exactly what I think Charlie Kirk was trying to say, is that we should be having debate, we should be having dialogue. It's unfortunate how it ended for him, but we have the ability to have the debate, to have the dialogue, because of people like him and others that have gone before us and others that will come after us. So please protect the person's right to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to speak.
Missy Daly, and on deck Gary Yakes.
My name is Missy Daly. I live in Oshkosh. I have two, well, I have three children that have all gone through Oshkosh West. My son is currently a student in this teacher's homeroom, and after all of this came out, he told me that this teacher did not ever share his personal opinions, may have mentioned it in class because it was being talked about, but did not share his own personal opinions. My daughter also had him as a teacher and said he was the most important teacher to prepare her for college. And although his class was difficult, she felt like she learned the most, and he was there to encourage and help her through all of her writing projects that she had to do in her English class. And I'm a teacher myself, and I teach my students that everybody has their own opinion, and they're entitled to their opinion. You don't have to agree with them, but you have to be respectful of their opinion. And I mean, to respond to someone else who has been up here, you know, saying that his thinking is embedded in his teaching, it is. And his thinking is that students need encouragement and care and love and guidance, and he embraces every student for who they are, not who he wants them to be, but who they are. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gary Yakes, and on deck is Marie Miller.
Good evening. My name is Gary Yakes, and unlike most of the people who've addressed you, I am a lawyer, and I'm proud of it. I'm also the oldest person in the room. You know, we elect a school board, and when we elect a school board, we elect the board to do what is in the best interest of the district, its students, its faculty, and its taxpayers. And I have a great deal of difficulty understanding how doing anything with respect to the teacher in question, who I don't know, would have any possible violation of that standard that you have to uphold when you make decisions. You have a duty to perform, and we expect you to perform it. That's why we elected you. Yes, there are a lot of people in this auditorium, but it's a mere pittance compared to the number of voters who cast ballots for you at the election in which you were candidates. So we expect you to do your duty, and among the highest of those duties is to honor the Constitution of the United States of America. And I am very pleased that a number of budding young lawyers in the audience have recited the First Amendment, and it's good to hear, and maybe this has served as a wonderful civics lesson if nothing else. However, the First Amendment of the Constitution, along with the other nine amendments, were the grave amendment of our Constitution, and they were adopted immediately after the Constitution itself was approved by the states. And it was, the Constitution itself was only approved with the understanding that immediately following the adoption, these ten amendments would immediately follow, because it was deemed so important by our founders and by the citizens of the country that these ten amendments immediately go into effect. And of course, the one we're talking about is the First Amendment, which guarantees the freedom of speech, but it also guarantees that there will be no state religion. I've heard a lot of talk tonight about being Christians. That's not a requirement for either you as members of the school board or any of us participating in this.
Attorney Yakes, I'm going to have to cut you off at this time.
Oh, I didn't realize it went by that fast. At any rate.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Marie Miller. Marie Miller, and on deck Daria Cherhart.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Marie Miller, and I reside in the city of Oshkosh. I have three children, all who went to public school in our district and attended Oshkosh West. Tonight, I want to speak about one of the most vital pillars of our democracy: free speech. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution begins with these powerful words: "Congress shall make no law abridging the freedom of speech." These few words carry enormous weight. They mean that in our country, the government cannot silence us for our beliefs, our criticisms, or our ideas, no matter how controversial or unpopular they may be. Free speech is not just a right. It's the lifeblood of a free society. It's what holds us to debate, it's what allows us to debate ideas, hold our leaders and each other accountable, challenge injustice, and drive progress. Let's be clear: free speech doesn't mean speech without consequence. It doesn't protect hate speech from public condemnation, nor does it protect lies from scrutiny. What it does protect is the right to express those views without fear of government censorship or punishment. In a democracy, that freedom is essential. It ensures that no single person or group holds a monopoly on truth. It allows a diversity of voices to be heard, including those we may strongly disagree with. That exchange of ideas, sometimes messy, sometimes uncomfortable, is how democracy thrives. In an age of social media, political polarization, and misinformation, it can be tempting to silence voices we don't like, but we must remember, the true test of our commitment to free speech is not how we treat the voices we agree with, but how we treat the voices we don't. The First Amendment is not perfect. It doesn't protect us from misinformation, and it doesn't guarantee a respectful conversation, but it does protect our right to speak, to question, and to dissent. And that is non-negotiable in a free society. We need to protect that right, not just with words, but with a culture that values open dialogue, critical thinking, and mutual respect. Because when free speech dies, democracy doesn't just weaken, it disappears. Tonight, I ask you to vote to protect the freedom of speech. The teacher in question taught my son last year and did an amazing job of connecting him and the other students, challenging them to think differently and holding them to academic standards that were very high.
Marie, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Daria, is it Cherhart? And on deck Meg Johnson.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Daria Cherhart. I'm an alumni of Oshkosh West, and in fact, I'm also an alumni of our local university, UW-Oshkosh. I would like to bring up the topic that's been brought up previously before, and I'm going to start off with something that's very important for every student and every teacher. There's a phrase that goes on, and most teachers know this: A student will go to school for two reasons: to learn or to be loved. I was that student that went to school to be loved, and that teacher gave me the love, the encouragement, and the power to continue my education when I thought I was going to fall flat and fail and falter to the illnesses that I face on a regular daily basis. If it wasn't for this teacher, I probably would have not succeeded in my career. He gave me things to do, he gave me encouragement, and he challenged every point of view that I had in a positive way. This teacher has made an impact on many students in our district. He has done so much work in our community. It'd be a shame if we took precedence over some few opinions in the community, over our rights as citizens, and not only that, it'll also set precedence for other school districts. If you make this choice and you go against this teacher, you will also set precedent for every other school district, and you will be that stepping stone, because it always takes one case before it reaches the Supreme Court and becomes national news. Is that where you want to go? I'm not sure. That's not my choice to make. But I do know is that as an Oshkosh resident, as someone who's helped other kids get through school, this teacher has amplified the importance of caring for their students and helping them to succeed where times when times are tough. And I would like for the board to take this into consideration, that we as not only students, alumni, and teachers to work together to keep a better society, to create, keep creating discourse, to allow for these freedoms at home, so that we can have a better and proper society. Thank you.
Thank you. Meg Johnson, and on deck is Nicholas Giesi. It might be Geezy.
Hello. Excuse me. My name's Meg Johnson, and I'm a current resident of Oshkosh, former Oshkosh West alumni, and here to talk about the teacher in question. To be totally honest, I'm absolutely petrified of public speaking. This is very, very out of character for me. But when a friend shared about what everything, you know, that's been going on, and then we decided to go to the meeting tonight, I thought it was something that I feel is important enough that I have to come and share my memory about the teacher in question. I think he was, yeah, 2011, I believe he was my teacher. I was in a car accident that year and suffered, you know, head injury. School was really difficult for me at the time, and the teacher in question was very, very patient with me, clearly made an impact, and I just, I fully, fully support, and I hope you guys make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas Giesi, and on deck Michael Faust. Is it Geezy or Griesy?
Griesy.
Thank you.
Nicholas Griesy, resident of Oshkosh, Wisconsin. I too attended school here at Oshkosh West. December 3, 2019, Officer Winsec was brutally attacked and could have easily lost his life to a senseless violent act. Did any faculty member post online about how he deserved the attack? Do you think that if someone did this, and they had part in that attack, would they still be employed? The answer is unequivocally no. So why is this situation any different? We all know that this is a moral stance on right versus wrong. That teacher condoned an assassination. He supports political violence. He tolerates murder. This type of thinking and rhetoric is demonic. Some would say it's a mental health issue, actually. He should not be teaching our children. He should not be employed with taxpayers' money, and he should not be on the payroll at all. So replace Charlie Kirk with Officer Winsec. And would he post the same thing? We know he would be fired. Please go the correct moral way. We all have a civil duty to uphold community standards. A teacher did not privately state his opinion. He said it on a global platform. Freedom of speech is protection against the government. It's not a blank check to say whatever you want without consequences. Employment has a code of conduct. Is hate speech freedom of speech? Because that's what he posted. Do we hold students accountable for online bullying? Or is that now freedom of speech? The irony of someone losing his life for free speech is applauded, but now people are angry and upset that this teacher might lose his job. That's all.
Thank you. Michael Faust, on deck, TJ Hobbs.
My comments are in regards to the widely circulated Facebook post recently made this month on the murder of Charlie Kirk. I grew up in, and I'm very grateful for my experience within the OASD, as it played a vital role in where I am now. As a recently new parent, I found contents of the post that were derogatory, insensitive, and extremely unprofessional. I was horrified that a teacher would feel and think such a way, let alone show the lack of judgment, to express publicly that in their opinion, a world is better when someone's thoughts and ideas are no longer in it. Someone's thoughts and ideas make each and every one of us our unique selves that school is supposed to help develop. I have been failing to reconcile how downplaying the death of anyone, let alone someone who was horrifically murdered, would not disqualify that someone from continuing to teach and lead a classroom of impressionable kids. I've also been struggling to understand how it doesn't completely go against the OASD's mission of empowering students, when likely around half of the classroom holds at least some of the views of Charlie Kirk. Yet, it's a better world without his voice and ideas in it. It perplexes me how that doesn't entirely contradict the OASD's principle of putting students first, when those students would struggle to give their opinions in a civil and respectful manner. I can't comprehend how that doesn't go, go against the OASD's core values of integrity and safety, when publicly saying it's better when a different voice and ideas are permanently silenced. There's already mental health struggles among kids, and this would make it worse. In conclusion, I just can't understand how the OASD is okay with all of this, for the current and future students of the OASD. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, TJ Hobbs, and on deck is Veronica Holliday.
Thank you for allowing this time. I'm here tonight in support of teachers and in support of freedom of speech. I'm here to ask you to listen to the students. I live in Oshkosh, by the way.
Thank you.
And to share a few words from an anonymous district employee. Quote, "I can't be here tonight, but the backlash that our colleague at OASD has been receiving is completely inappropriate. At no point did the teacher in question indicate that his viewpoint had anything to do with his teaching position, OASD, or being a teacher at all. After a review of district policy, it's also clear that his social media post broke no school policies whatsoever. If we fire a teacher for his Facebook post, then I truly believe that us teachers have no right to personal opinions, personal lives, or personal matters. We will have to be district employees 24/7 with no freedom to fight for justice or to speak up for what we believe in outside of work. We don't all have to share the same opinions for every single student of ours to be welcome, loved, respected, and safe in our classrooms." Thank you.
Thank you. Veronica Holliday, and then on deck is our final speaker, Sergio Nunez.
My name is Veronica Holliday. I live and go to school in Oshkosh, um, and I'm up here with the purpose of defending my teacher, um, who is one of the kindest and most genuine I've ever encountered at West. Um, and it's just been incredibly upsetting seeing him come under attack for a statement made on his own personal social media account, especially one that expresses disapproval of Charlie Kirk, who was a hateful and problematic individual who made mine and many others' lives much more unsafe. We're talking about, and I don't know if the board knows this, a person who constantly reaffirmed and stated that he believed the Civil Rights Act of 1964 to be a mistake. To mimic the points of another individual who spoke tonight, Charlie Kirk taught kids hatred and violence. Now, a grievance, uh, that a lot of the people who have come to attack this teacher, um, have had is that, um, a teacher, a public figure, is making statements that indoctrinate children. I want to set a couple of things clear as a student of his. My teacher does not push or express his political opinion on or in front of anyone. He, like Charlie Kirk, is a Christian, and would never do anything to make any students change or feel any particular way about their opinion, whether or not they're conservative or liberal or whatever. I've had another teacher of mine actively ridicule students for their own feelings and reactions to Charlie Kirk and his death. And if our community cares about what my teacher says on his own time, not in school hours, they should absolutely be livid at that. He, as an American, has a right to free speech. He expressed that in a way that has no direct impact on any of his students. That should be the only thing that matters. Anyone who is here today angry about what he had to say is only angry that they, that my teacher does not reflect their own personal political opinion. I personally have long dreamed of getting a career in education, in educational policy. My dream at the moment is to go to the University of Wisconsin-Madison. But at the moment, I'm seriously reconsidering my future, just seeing that this is how we treat people of his occupation. Taking someone's job away, this death by capitalism, is a grave overreaction, and I pray that the board sees that way, too.
Thank you. And our final speaker this evening is Sergio Nunez.
Sergio Nunez, uh, Oshkosh, Wisconsin. I've got two kids, South Park and West High School. Uh, so real quick, I just wanted to give you a couple of truths about who I am. Number one, I'm originally from Florida. What is this loser here doing in Wisconsin from Florida? Because Florida schools suck. The government gets involved in everything that teachers do, and teachers cannot think for themselves. So my wife and I said, "Let's find the best place in the country to move to where my kids can have a decent education." Oshkosh, Wisconsin it was, and here I am. Number two, I'm a minority, as you can tell. What does that mean? When I came to this country as a five-year-old, I fell in love with one document, and that document is called the Constitution. The United States of America allows us citizens the freedom of speech to, to state what we want to state regardless, and, and no fear attached to it. I fell in love with that document, and I could almost recite it. Kind of a joke, but not really. My next truth is that my daughter goes here. She had this teacher, uh, last year, and something changed last year, where my daughter was like, "I can't stand this one teacher." And I said, "Why?" She's like, "'Cause he makes me think outside the box. I give him an answer, and he doesn't like it, so he tells me to elaborate as to why, why, why." Last year, I didn't know who it was until today. My daughter told me about today's meeting, and she told me, "That was the teacher that I used to tell, uh, talk to you about, the one that would make me think outside the box, not just a quick answer here and there." So I don't know who the teacher is, never met him or her, uh, but he did something to my daughter where she actually could, could elaborate on whatever it is that she's thinking, something that she couldn't do before. My next truth is that I had never heard of Charlie Kirk. I heard of him the day he died. I have never heard of, uh, of the guy say, uh, prior to, but I did look up YouTube videos about the guy, and I can honestly say, I'm not a fan. For whatever reason, you could call it whatever it is, I'm not a fan of Charlie Kirk. And my last and final truth is that I'm a veteran. I spent 13 years in the Marine Corps, uh, from 2002 to 2015, and I'm a proud veteran. In my 13 years, I lost 14 friends, 14 Marines that I bury now. Not only those 14 Marines, but six who are, are gonna need attention for the rest of their lives. And those 14 Marines and myself, we fought for this country, we fought for the Constitution, we fought for the right to speak freely, no fear of what you have to say. So, completely irrelevant to, to, to what the teacher said, or who he is, or whatever, freedom of speech includes hate speech. We fought for that, I fought for that. Freedom of speech includes hate speech. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your comments this evening. We are going to take a three-minute break for those of you that, well, for those of you that would like to stay and listen to the rest of the meeting, you're more than welcome. For those of you that would like to exit, we'll take a few minutes, so you can do so. Okay, we're going to continue with our board meeting this evening. Next up is the Board President's Report and Recognition of Retirements. We have two retirements this evening. The first one is Melissa Jean Anderson, a science teacher at Oshkosh North High School, and she's been there since 2000. And the next one is Amy Wiley, cross-category, cross-categoryal teacher at Velp Phillips Middle School, and she's been there since 2013. Dr. Herza, would you like to say a word?
I would. Thank you, Mrs. Wyman. I just want to thank these two dedicated Oshkosh area school district teachers for what they've done for our students and their families and our community over these many years, to make sure that students have opportunities to grow and to succeed in the classroom and beyond, so. Excuse me. I just want to wish them a long, healthy, and happy retirement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then we have an exciting announcement, and that announcement is the mission moment for this week, and it's the partnership between the Hoffmaster Company and the Oshkosh Area School District Education Foundation. The Education Foundation is once again partnering with Hoffmaster, who has committed $10,000 to support educational field trips for elementary students. This is the third year of this collaboration, and it continues to expand learning opportunities beyond the classroom. These field trips that were funded through this partnership give students, bring classroom lessons to life, spark curiosity, and connect learning with the world around them. Each of the eight participating elementary schools received grant funding designated this year for the fifth-grade field trips. The following schools are included: Emmeline Cook, Franklin, Jefferson, Menominee, Oaklawn, Reed, Roosevelt, and Shapiro Stem Academy. And they were selected on the basis of economic needs of the students and the families. Hoffmaster views this partnership as part of its broader commitment to the Oshkosh community, and the field trips give students both education fun, and they're glad to be a part of it. I want to thank Hoffmaster, and I also want to thank Chris Wright, who is our board representative for the day, and certainly Teresa Duran, who's the head of the Oshkosh Education Foundation. Thank you to all. This is a wonderful partnership, and I hope we see more like them. Superintendent's Report.
All right. We're gonna head over to Roosevelt Elementary, where the second graders at Roosevelt recently completed an engaging hands-on geography lesson. Students crafted paper models of mountains and then simulated the formation of rivers. This creative activity made a complex, concept-like landform creation visual and fun, helping students better understand the forces that shape the Earth's surface. Reed Elementary School's parking lot has been transformed into a vibrant outdoor, uh, educational outdoor space, thanks to a community event called Rocket Booster Parking Lot Picasso. In August, dedicated volunteers spent mornings painting an array of colorful and interactive designs. The new space, created with input from staff and students, includes a variety of engaging features, like a running track, a map of the United States, updated four-square courts, and custom basketball courts. So thank you for everyone that was involved in that. Last year, we followed our journey of our Core Knowledge Language Arts, CKLA, curriculum field tests through our spotlight of videos to improve our reading, uh, reading scores. Chapter three of the video series spotlights two students, CJ and Sedona, and their positive experiences through the new curriculum. Check out the video on the website. We're excited to see the continued impact of CKLA district-wide throughout this year. In a meaningful annual tradition, students from the Communities Program at Oshkosh North High School honored the lives affected by 9/11, the 9/11 tragedy, while dedicating their time of service. Students volunteered across the Oshkosh community, picking up trash, landscaping, and working on various outdoor projects. New this year, also led to the collect, a collection drive which resulted in, in over 3,000 items being donated to local nonprofits and the Oshkosh Area Humane Society. I just wanna, I had an opportunity to, to engage some students as part of that process, and I know they ran out of space in the vans that they were collecting things with and needed to make extra trips. So, congratulations to everybody involved to that event. I'm incredibly plout, proud of their efforts to make a tangible difference in our community. Our district has been honored with the prestigious award of the Pointer's Community Initiatives for our outstanding support of our academic career empowerment program. Through this two-year collaboration, over 100 students from Oshkosh have benefited from hands-on experiences and exposures to various career fields, helping them prepare for successful futures. The award celebrates the district's ongoing commitment to expanding student access to real-world learning and career exploration opportunities. An annual adapted physical education kickball game between Oshkosh North and Oshkosh West was a testament of, testament of teamwork, sportsmanship, and pure joy. The event brought together, uh, brought students together for the afternoon for a friendly competition. This game is a cherished tradition that highlights the incredible spirit and inclusivity within our school community. We have extended our deadline for our community to participate in this year's Oshkosh Schools Academy, a seven-month program that gives community members a hands-on understanding of our school district operations, priorities, and mission. The academy meets, uh, one Friday a month, and will start in October through April. Anyone interested can learn more and apply on our website. Applications are due October 7th, and the first session is October 17th. And I'll conclude just with some places that I've been out and about in over the last couple of weeks, so thank you very much for an opportunity to share.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. And now we will go to- And now we will go to District Administrator's Supplemental Reports. The first is the verbal report from September 10th, 2025 Listening Session. Dr. Coleman.
Good evening to the board. At the September 10th School Board Listening Session, there were four community members who provided remarks to be heard by board members and administration. There were two primary themes of the remarks shared. Those themes pertaining to school resource officers and their access to student information and oversight, and then district communication and community engagement. One community member provided questions pertaining to the overall benefit of having school resource officers in our schools and asked whether law enforcement officers can access student records using Infineon Campus, and if so, what parameters are there. Another community member provided comments that acknowledged progress in district communication since March 2023, when the same community member provided feedback. That community member also noted public relations visibility as being something that lags behind parochial schools. She then praised Vail Phillips Middle School for its strong start to the school year, the successful clothing closet, and suggested landscape improvements. Also asked about community REED events with the public library and inquired about the E. Cook, Emmeline Cook Sister School Partnership with the school in Zambia. She also voiced discomfort with armed school resource officers in schools. Another community member shared remarks about the potential risks of unfettered school resource officer access to student home addresses as a systemic issue and called for clear expectations and monitoring on how that information is used. And the fourth community member recommended making the SRO Memorandum of Understanding and related legislation, for example, Act 20 and Act 15, publicly available and to align with national best practices. That community member also asked if the new food services contract included culturally responsive options such as halal meals. The district is reviewing the School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding and related agreements for possible, for improvements that work is undergoing. And the administration will also provide an update on cultural menu options under the new food service contract. Our facilities and operations staff have received the feedback pertaining to landscaping concerns, and a determination will be made on what follow-up actions, if any, will be taken. And the questions pertaining to school resource officer access to student information in Infineon Campus has been reviewed. Dr. Davis, myself, and Assistant Superintendent Yurki had an opportunity to meet with members of the OPD, including Chief Smith, and an update can be provided on what that meeting and discussion was as we continue to review possible future revisions. If there are no questions about that, I would ask that you accept this summary report, and I will also provide, at your request, if necessary, details about any follow-up actions that came from the School Board Listening Session.
Do you have a follow-up date, potential follow-up date for the SRO conversations? Are they ongoing, or is there a date you're looking at?
Those conversations are ongoing at this time, so I don't have a date to provide for when that work will be completed. But there are phases that we have mapped out right now. So, I can provide a follow-up at our next School Board Meeting if you'd like, or a follow-up can be provided by Dr. Davis and his weekly memo to the board. But just to assure you that that work is ongoing with a due date for completion closer toward this spring.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Coleman, Career and Technical Education, Academic and Career Planning Update.
All right. So you all have received the supplemental report. I'll just provide a summary for those who are listening and the many who are present. District Policy 2411 guides our district's academic and career planning work, and it also aligns with Wisconsin law, which requires every district to provide access to education for employment programming. Career and technical education, often referred to as CTE, is central to that mission, to give students the academic and technical skills needed for college, career, and community readiness. The Oshkosh Area School District offers a broad range of career and technical education pathways, from agriculture and STEM to health sciences, finance, and transportation. Signature programs include our School-to-Work program, and that pairs seniors with capstone experiences in local manufacturing, and our Youth Apprenticeship. That's a one- to two-year elective that lets juniors and seniors earn credit, potential wages, and industry experience under local businesses and mentors. That work is being led by Alex Torres. He was with us tonight, could not be here for this portion of the presentation, but expresses his enthusiasm for the direction that we are going with our School-to-Work and Youth Apprenticeship programming. We are also expanding opportunities for students to earn industry-recognized credentials. Those credentials validate in-demand skills and factor into state report cards and workforce development efforts. Leadership for this work is now under the fabulous Melanie Roblousky. She's our new career and academic, career and, I'm sorry, academic and career planning slash career and technical education coordinator. She brings 18 years of experience here in the Oshkosh Area School District and advanced study in CTE leadership. Her efforts will help to ensure that our curriculum alignment, career planning, and academic planning support, as well as the use of our federal grants like the Perkins Grant, are tightly aligned with our strategic plan to bolster both career and technical education and academic and career planning. Looking ahead at our 2030 vision, we have a very ambitious vision to make sure that every high school student will complete at least one career pathway or CTE course, along with opportunities such as internship, dual-credit access, or other industry-recognized credentials. We also have an ambitious goal to increase participation in work-based learning and increasing that by 35%. And then lastly, and you'll hear about this later tonight, we have a goal to increase our business partnerships, and we know that business partnerships are essential to the success of our school programming, and we want to specifically leverage those business partnerships and partnerships with industry companies to continue to expand matches for students who participate in the Youth Apprenticeship programming or School-to-Work programming. Through these efforts, we aim for every graduate to leave the Oshkosh Area School District with a sense of purpose, a personalized academic and career plan, and the confidence to succeed and successfully compete in college, career, and in life. What questions can I answer, or feedback can I share?
Dr. Herzog.
Thank you. I have to admit that I was very excited about this report. I'm always interested in the reports, but this one I was very excited about because to me, it's a more robust report and plan than what we've seen in previous years. I especially liked the major points B through D, aligning our CTE coordination with the strategic plan, having a more robust program. You noted that in point C, empowering every student to graduate, career, college, and community-ready. To me, this gives more substance to that statement of college, career, and community-ready. I know some in the community have questioned, are we just preparing students to graduate, or are we truly preparing them to get into the world of life and to be able to go on to some form of post-high school education and into careers that will be, which will allow them to have families and to support those families, as well as to be good contributing citizens? And then having a, every student graduate with a sense of purpose, having at least some idea of where they would like to start that post-secondary education, to me is very exciting. So I want to commend you and the others who have put this together, recognizing that when we lose someone from a position, I always feel like we use that as an opportunity to build on what's been done before and take it to the next level. So I'm excited about the work that you and these others have done. I've reached out to Melanie, and we'll be meeting with her soon, to further talk about these ideas and the roles that have been laid out. I think this is a critical program and a critical need in our district. As I've talked with other School Board members on the State School Board Association, as I've read high school summaries of course offerings and opportunities for learning in other districts, we, to me, we've been somewhat behind. And I'm excited, therefore, about the plan to do more with youth apprenticeships and industry credentials for our students. I just see this as providing lots of opportunities for our students. So, thank you to you and the others who have prepared this report.
Dr. Herzog, thank you, and thank you for your support of this vision.
You're welcome.
Any other? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sam.
Thanks.
And next up, Adopt a School Program update. Mr. Miller.
So joining Mr. Miller tonight will be Shannon Seaman. So Shannon works for the Chamber of Commerce and is a strong partner in our development in the, not only the Adopt a School program, but in a lot of our opportunities to expose our kids to careers. So it, I think, fits very well with Sam's presentation. So just wanted to make sure that everybody, I'm sure Shannon will introduce herself, but really excited, and I think it's a great opportunity for us to be able to extend into the community and be partners with the Chamber of Commerce, and just want to thank her for her work over the last couple of years. So with that, I'll turn it over to Anthony.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Good evening to the board. We just want to take time this evening to give you all an update on the Adopt a School program that we relaunched and put more energy into in the last couple of months. Just a quick reminder what the program is. The purpose of the program is for us to develop formalized partnerships with businesses and organizations across the community who are interested in supporting student learning and enhancing their experiences. We want to make sure that we're providing opportunities that are both meaningful and impactful to our students and give businesses an opportunity to share their time, energy, expertise with our students in a more impactful, meaningful way. So... She told me to turn it off first. There it is. So, since we relaunched, we have 10 schools that have been adopted. I know the slide says nine, but I needed to update it since the last time I submitted it. So 10 schools have been adopted. Seven of these partnerships are new. These relationships have been, partnerships have been formed by us leveraging our networks and also through the collective effort of our educators. I do want to give a special shout-out to the Vail Phillips crew. They have a system that they put in place called the Houses System, and they wanted to ensure a successful launch of the House system, so they did a lot of groundwork to create the partnerships that they developed across the city. As you can see, they have a few listed here. So the partnerships that are new, that have been created, are at North High School, Reed Elementary, Roosevelt Elementary, Jacob Shapiro Elementary, Vail Phillips, and West High School. And then the one that is missing from here is Franklin. Their partner is Fletcher Chiropractic. I also want to shout out Molina Healthcare, who had an opportunity to donate over 200 hygiene items to Oshkosh West High School. And we also had a healthy donation from the Evergreen Retirement Community to Reed Elementary in regards to school supplies for both educators and students.
As Bryanson, I'm Shannon Seaman with the Oshkosh Chamber. I've been in the role of the Education and Talent Director for two years now. We, I started the Adopt a School, well, I rekind of started the Adopt a School program when I started, and Anthony coming on is a great addition to any efforts that I had made because now there's follow-through and there's follow-up, and all kinds of things are happening, which is great. We have nine schools to go. We are kind of diligently working. I know at the Chamber, we are focusing more on putting that information out there. We do a monthly newsletter, and I have kind of reconstructed it so that it's, a big, huge part of it, about two pages of the five-to-six-page document are on Adopt a School. They're going to be focusing on existing relationships and what they might look like, what's available, and what it might look like for your business. Now, we are focusing on the fact that there are nine schools to go, but each school does still have needs that aren't, you know, every school, obviously, we want every school matched, but we want there to be more than just like one, a one-on-one, because there is more needs than maybe just the one-on-one can reach. So, the idea that there is still opportunities within all of the schools is going to be out there, but I definitely think that moving forward, we are going to have a lot more presence and a lot more marketing around Adopt a School, which I hope will encourage some more partnerships from our direction.
And along with the marketing uptick, we will also be a little bit more proactive to collaborate with our foundation. So Teresa Duran, to identify opportunities for organizations to adopt a school through that connection. We'll also continue to leverage our networks and also do our best to, I guess, connect with different educators across the system to see who they may be connected to and how those connections can yield partnerships as well. So, curious enough, you all have any questions or any feedback?
I have a question.
Yes.
Before you got there, Shannon, there was a program called PALS, Partners at Learning, and these partnerships are great. They used to be, let's say, old companies or companies that were involved in the program before. Are you seeing a resurgence of some of those partnering, or?
I think that there are so many asks of some of those bigger companies that if you're not getting to them at the exact right time, it's hard to get into some of their, into some of their minds, I guess. Not to say that there isn't certainly opportunities and support from some of the companies. I'm sure you're thinking some of the, I mean, there are some big names and stuff that you would love to see on things.
Well, even if it's not a big name, you know, I think, and it always isn't financial, sometimes it's just manpower to help with different projects.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I think that the fear maybe in some of these, some of these situations is the, that it is all financial or that it's all a big commitment, and we need to definitely have people understand that reading in a classroom is just as important as, you know, gifts of money, or there's value in all of those levels, and there's value in the people. One of the great, amazing things about like Evergreen and Miravida is, is the, that they have people and they want those people to like interact, and that's where we have to find more, you know, really beneficial, the right partners for the right things, for sure.
Sure.
And in addition to that, with us forming, making these formalized agreements, it will allow us to keep the partnerships going regardless of who is in leadership in our schools, as well as who's in leadership positions in whatever organization or business is supporting us, because we did lose quite a few partnerships due to change of leadership, and those companies still want to, like you mentioned, do they want to still stay connected? Yes, they do, and they, some of them want them to look a different way or a different school, so.
Mr. Wright?
I guess for, boy, that was loud. For the community's sake, because there might be some businesses or whatnot listening, ideally, what does a partnership entail? What do, what do we want to get out of that partnership? What is a business's expectations? You know, like, how does that partnership work to benefit the school and community?
So, it can look different at each building. Each building has a wish list that has been submitted to myself and Shannon, and shared on the Chamber's website at the moment, but there are a wide variety of asks in each building, whether it's snacks in the classroom, school supplies. There are asks for reading partners in the classroom. So, the range of opportunity is wide, and that's why we just need to be a little bit more intentional about sharing what opportunities do exist.
I would also offer, if there's a business that's out there that feels like they have, you know, some talent or expertise or something that they'd like to support, certainly, you know, let's reach out because we can make those, sometimes we don't know those matches are there yet. So, just on both ends, being proactive. So just on both ends, being proactive, I think, is really important.
I'm sorry? I am just curious if or how this program interacts with, say, things like Leadership Oshkosh. I'm actually literally thinking, I think it was an example, Fletcher Chiropractic happened to have one of their owners, who was participating in Leadership Oshkosh at the time, came to E. Cook, and then that led to a partnership for a while. I'm curious if that is another opportunity for partnership and how those individuals could help work with both their employers and, employers and the nonprofits that they're also partnered with, or if, how does this partnership with the Chamber as a kind of vessel to help connect to these areas work?
Well, I almost feel like we should have Trina come up and answer that, but...
She was far away.
She's far away. I think the thing that maybe people don't understand is that Trina and I literally sit two desks away from each other, and we can hear everything that we say. So the Chamber is, I'm not a silo. I'm, we absolutely work together in every facet that we can to try to support each other's programs, and anytime that we can encourage that, that sort of camaraderie or transition in things, we absolutely do. I mean, that's, anytime we're thinking of anything that we're doing, it's, oh, let's send it to my group of people, and let's send it to, you know. So we absolutely cross, kind of pollinate our programs to try to encourage those relationships.
Awesome. And the only other thing I do want to point out is, yes, this is Adopt a School, and we talk a lot about business partnerships, but it's not all businesses that are the partners here. We're looking at the Kiwanis Clubs, Rotary Clubs, things like that. I think that's an important reminder to all of us that whatever kind of group that we have out there, there are ways that we can get involved in the school. And talking to one of you too is a great way to figure it out.
Yeah, and individual community members as well, so.
That's great. Well, we look forward to continued support, both of you and for our students through this program. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, other reports. First up, Facilities and Finance.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyman. The Facilities and Finance, excuse me, seasonal allergies. The Facilities and Finance Committee met on Thursday, September 11th. We had a number of agenda items. The first one was an early retirement notice incentive, which is on the agenda for tonight. We discussed offering a $2,000 stipend to employees who notify the district of their retirement intentions by November 15th for the end of the current school year. This program was implemented in other districts and helped with staffing by providing earlier notice of retirements. And so there was a motion to move this proposal forward for tonight's meeting. We also had an update on the Vail Phillips Athletic Site by Mr. Fox. Provided quite a bit of information for us. There has been, there had been delays to the project due to improper fill and conflicts with the contractor. Construction has been tracking per the latest schedule, which was submitted in August. The basketball courts, progress is moving along. The garage, at the time of our meeting, was noted as being largely complete, and I believe it is at this time. Bleachers are in, footings and foundations are underground. The Memorial Corner, which is on the corner of Central and East, excuse me, West New York Avenue, is the last major chunk, hoping to see the masons this week. Landscaping on the east side is done. The game field inside the track is going to be strawed. Overall, the project completion is targeted for the end of the third week of September, so we're pretty much there. Landscaping would take an additional two weeks to complete after that. As I drive by there regularly, I'm excited to see the progress with trees and shrubs and other things taking place. The Memorial Corner will include a memorial tree to be dedicated with no physical mark replaced. The dedication, there's a dedication event being planned for Friday, October 17th. I know that there has been district communication on that. The city paving portion is being completed on the Central Avenue portion of the, Central Street portion of the project. The street and everything should be 100% completed by October 17th for the memorial. Mr. Nihans presented information on the, on budget assumptions. He noted that budgets are capped by revenue limits, so expenses must match revenues. Revenue is largely based on student FTEs, and better clarity on student FTEs was going to be available after the third Friday count. The system uses a five-year trend for forecasting, thus suggesting for grade-level progression. There's a three-year average, which shows an overall drop of 13 students for the 26-27 budget. The district will receive $325 per student increase within the biennium, bringing the total per student to just over $12,000. Due to declining enrollment, the district receives a declining enrollment exemption for the first year, which would be 2026-27. We also talked about the impact of vouchers. The trend has been increases of 1.2 to 1.3 million, bringing the amount that we tax for vouchers to just under $11 million. Voucher schools received a per-people increase of $600 this year, whereas the public schools received an increase of $325. The increase in vouchers was likely due to new kindergarten enrollees and their families qualifying early in their careers under the income threshold, because they don't need to requalify. Once they're in, they're in. The district is pursuing discussions with the city about including voucher costs on the tax bills for transparency. This is something that the Green, is going to happen in Green Bay, and we know that two other districts have also looked into doing this as well. Voucher amounts for high schoolers is $12,731, which is higher than the amount of money backing each of the public school, high school students. We also had expense assumptions. We were projecting a 3% increase in salaries, given that the CPI is trending at roughly 2.76%. State aid is expected to increase slightly, but not enough to offset local tax burden increases due to reduced calculator for the revenue limit formula. We're projecting a 3% increase in health, in the health plan, 5% increase in utilities, 5% increase in transportation. We also noted that with open enrollment, the goal is to bring students back into the district rather than focus solely on the money. We believe we have a quality product, and with what we heard tonight about the CTE program, I think this can be something that many families would be interested in. There are two groups of students to consider, the Oshkosh residents open-enrolling out and non-residents opening, rolling, open-enrolling in. There's a balanced approach to bring back open-enrolled-out students and increase open-enrolled-in students. Students who left during COVID to attend districts and private schools are not, because that we weren't, they weren't adhering to county guidelines, has also been a cause of some of the numbers. And finally, the business insurance is expected to increase by about 2%. This would include workers' compensation, as well as property and liability insurance. And we also are looking at putting money back into the fund balance to exceed the 12% policy number. Our next meeting will be held on October 9th, 2025, at 7:30 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we have Legislative Committee.
Thank you. The Legislative Committee met yesterday morning, Tuesday, September 23rd, at 7:30 a.m. We discussed a few items, one being state budget updates by Dr. Davis. Currently, there's a bill being discussed in the state legislature to allow retired teachers to come back and teach if they've been out of service, or if they haven't been teaching for 75 days. There's also potential bills, one of them being a teacher bill of rights, teacher personal safety in the workplace, Act 24 mathematics, which would place a focus on math and financial support for math advancement, consolidation in shared services, which is mostly for smaller rural districts and union high schools. We discussed federal budget updates. There wasn't a lot happening there, and our funding is on track. Voucher transparency, Dr. Herzog touched on that in her Facilities and Finance report, where the City of Oshkosh potentially might put voucher numbers on the tax bill in the future. We'll see if that happens or not. WASB update by Dr. Herzog. She talked about some bills that WASB is looking at promoting, meals for all students, prohibiting local government agencies from flying flags other than U.S. and state flags. And then our next meeting will be on October 28th of 2025. Thank you.
Thank you. We move on to the consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board's been furnished with background material on each item, and we've discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member would like to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and voted on separately. No board vote is needed at this point to move a resolution from consent agenda to individually considered.
So moved.
Second.
Wright and Herzog?
Yep.
All right.
Ford?
Aye.
Got to get this on. Okay, Ford.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
Smiltney.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Dewitt.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Thank you. Any requests for future items for committee review? Any announcements? We will now be adjourning to executive session, and executive session considering the employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation of a public employer with which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ford and Dewitt?
Yes.
Okay, Herzog.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
Smiltney.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Wyman.
Aye.
Dewitt.
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned to executive session.
Thank you very much.